Half a day, the Committee on General Government Operation and Appropriations is now called to order. Today is Thursday, February 1st, 2024, and the time now is 2:11 or 2:11. In compliance with the open government law, the notices for this public hearing were posted on the GovWeb Public Notice Portal, KGTF PBS Channel 12, and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Tuesday, January 23rd, with a change on Change One on January 25th, and again on Tuesday, January 30th. The agenda today, we have two nominees and a bill, Bill 204-37. But we will begin with the appointee of Daphne Mae Leon Guero. If you can please come to the panel, and then I'll read off the rules of engagement. Okay, just have a seat. And if anyone else is going to testify on her behalf, please come forward and have a seat, and after I finish the rules, then we'll go ahead and commence. All right? The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Please provide my legislative staff with any document for photocopying and distribution. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for questions or additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of the general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from participating and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure the microphone is on, and then you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me, my vice chair, Senator Telo We will now ask Ms. Daphne Leon Guero to go ahead and give her opening statement, and then after that, I'll have Mr. Kinga. Or would you prefer Mr. Kinga to speak about you first? Well, then we'll start with you then, Daph.
Okay. So half a day, Senator San Augustin and Senator Tadegui. It is my honor to be nominated for another round of being a commissioner for the Guam Ethics Commission. My background is in human resource management, and I am currently the director of human resource management for Atkins Quirl. Yes, so in the last two years with the Ethics Commission, I feel like we have really done a lot to establish the commission and drive forward our initiative. So I really look forward to your consideration for continuing on in a second term. Thank you.
Mr. Kinga.
Thank you, Senator Chairman Joe San Augustin, and greetings to the vice chair, Senator Tadegui. So half a day, Senator Chairman Joe San Augustin, it's with great admiration and esteem that I write to express my unequivocal support for Daphne Mae Leon Guero's reappointment as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission. Her unwavering integrity, comprehensive acumen in the field of human resources, and proactive communication skills make her an ideal candidate worthy of confirmation for a second term on this esteemed commission. As a commissioner, she played an integral role in developing and executing the commission's mission, especially in the formulation of the commission's personnel rules and workplace policies. From the beginning, she served dutifully, having attended meetings of the commission and sought organizational accomplishments during her initial term to include the establishment of the Ethics Investigator and Compliance Officer position series in the classified service of the government of Guam, the expansion of commission policies, and the adoption of commission standard operating procedures. She is committed, passionate, and accomplished individual. Furthermore, Commissioner Leon Guero has dedicated herself to the service of our community in the field of human resource management through her work with the Society for Human Resource Management as past president and current member of the executive committee. She maintains the following professional designations and certifications: the Certified Associate in Project Management, SHRM Senior Certified Professional, SHRM Leading Internal Investigation Certification, and the SHRM People Analytics Specialty Certification. Her commitment to advancing the field of human resources in both the public and private workforce is noteworthy and commendable. In short, Commissioner Leon Guero has brought tremendous value to the commission and is an essential part of its future. Her background and voice will continue to support a balanced and fair deliberation of all complaints heard by the commission. Her experience and commitment to public integrity are the reason why she should continue her service on the commission. I have no doubt that Daphne Mae Leon Guero will continue to serve with great distinction as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission. I respectfully ask for the legislature's confirmation of her reappointment. Sisus Massey.
Thank you. Senator Tadegui, do you have any question for the appointee, the nominee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to you, and of course, those who are here today to testify. And first, let me thank you so much for wanting to continue to serve in this capacity. I know this is not a very easy commission, you know, looking over cases and then people finding out that you're on this board, and you might get some phone calls that you really don't want at late now hours of the night. So I hope your four years that you've been serving, correct? It's been four years currently, or is it only two?
It's been two. I was appointed in 2021.
Okay. So this is going to be considered your second term. Okay, so in laws of this commission, you could only serve two terms. So this will then, you know, have a serve. I'm a true believer in that. I believe that we need to allow other people to serve on boards, and I've heard that people have been on boards for almost, you know, 20 years sometimes, and you know, there's we lack the, you know, new ideas, fresh eyes, you know, when something like that happens. That's why I like this board, the way it's set up. It is four years, it's quite extensive, it's almost eight years long. But when we get people like you who want to sit on the board who actually is the president, especially in human resources, you know, of yours, I think as society of human resources management, as a past president, people with your expertise and know-how, you know, that it's music to my ears, because then I know that you have the experience needed, you know, in this capacity, in this very difficult commission capacity, you know. So other than that, I just want to thank you again for serving the people of Guam, and my door is always open if you have any concerns, and I'll be happy to address anything I can do to help you. Okay? Good luck.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui.
Thank you.
Ms. Leon Guero, you work for AK?
Yes.
Anybody get a discount for Toyota, or I'm just going to tease you?
Only if you're married to me.
Okay, I just wanted to tease, because I used to be a fan of AK until they were slow in giving me my deals, my bill lately. But anyway, you know, thank you for accepting another round, and may God bless you, because everything you do at the Guam Ethics Commission is going to bleed over to AK. Or whatever you do in AK, it bleeds into the government. It's got to be business friendly, and if it's wrong, it's wrong, if it's right, it's right, and I know you, that's how you're viewing it. And may God bless the folks that get reported. May they find some refuge somewhere else other than messing around in the governor of Guam, and they don't run to private industries. Hopefully, when they get marked in GovWeb, maybe they leave, so we can be, clean up our island. But with that, being there's no other one to ask questions. Yes, ma'am. Yes, Senator.
I'm sorry, I had one more other question. I apologize. Do you see anything that you need at the commission right now to make sure that, you know, you're ensuring your Ts are dotted and Is are, you know?
In terms of, sorry?
Yeah, well, in terms of what can better serve the commission, the Ethics Commission, what do you need additionally to, you know, to get the job done, to ensure that there's fair analysis of all those complaints that come in, something like that, you know?
Definitely, it's supporting our request on the budget especially, right? Because I-
I'm sure your director just leaned over. I just saw him, you know, budget, you know? I wasn't a true fan of, you know, giving additional money to create a whole new government agency with this commission. I've been one that's been very vocal about it. I don't want to create another civil service commission or another agency within the government. It's about downsizing our government, you know, rightsizing it, not downsizing it, but rightsizing it.
Yeah.
You know, so, but anyways, okay, the budget, anything else?
To be able to support our initiatives, but also really, really support of what we're doing and maybe promoting more visibility of the accomplishments that the commission has, you know, has achieved over the last couple of years, right? We were just redeployed or reactivated basically a couple of years ago, and so I think we've made tremendous strides. I think more visibility to the work that we're doing would be really good, and that's what we're working toward this year.
Well, thank you, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. And just a reminder that, you know, Senator Tadegui is my vice. We're in charge of the appropriation and all that stuff, so when you talk about money, you watch the movie, right? Show me the money. You need to show me what you've done with what you have. When it comes to the budget, if you don't show it, just don't ask. Save yourself, you know, the length of asking, because Senator Tadegui and I will look at you like, really? But anyway, moving along, there being no one else to present testimony on the appointment of Daphne Mae Leon Guero, this hearing is now concluded. I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing and providing feedback and suggestion. The referral of appointment of Daphne Mae Leon Guero to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission for the term of four years, beginning on May 17, 2023 to May 16, 2027, this public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 2:22. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Leon Guero. Now we will move to Ms. Margaret Tequenco. Just sit, just don't move, Mr. Kinga, because Margaret, Margaret right there. Ms. Margaret, you know, I read the rules of engagement, but we'll go ahead and just go ahead and begin. Rules, it still applies to your appointment, your hearing here. Okay?
Okay.
So we'll just go ahead and give you the chance now to go ahead and give us your opening statement on why you want to continue, or why you want to be part of this Ethics Commission. Please.
Um, well, I never wanted to be it in the beginning, because it wasn't around.
State your name, state your name.
Oh, my name is Margaret Tequenco, village from Alesu, and I've been on Guam for about 34 years now. What else? I retired from Xerox Corporation as their general manager after 10 years of serving there, and built some great companies on Guam. Yeah, when I was asked to serve, you know, we didn't have a commission, so studying it up, and I'm not, you know, with the government, I want to say with the political arena or understand, you know, like the government, how do you want to say it, policies and everything? So it was, it's been a learning curve, because I'm used to being in the private sector, so the way things happen in the public sector is very, the private, the public sector versus private sector, two different worlds sometimes. So it's been very educational for me to see the differences. And, but one of the things that we did, it was really hard to set up in the beginning, because in a way, when we were there, to quite honestly, it was the blind leading the blind. You know, we didn't necessarily know everything, and luckily, we had, you know, one commissioner who was there, and I'm probably getting too much details, I'm oversharing. But I just want to say, you know, we got Jesse on board, and I've known Jesse since he was a kid, and one of the things about Jesse is, you know, he's so thorough and knows everything, keeps us on board, all that kind of stuff. So we've just learned a lot, and what we've done in the last couple of years, and really what he's done in the last couple of years, blows me away to have that kind of talent within the government. So I really enjoy doing what we do. I think the things that we're doing, the programs that we're coming up with, the training that we're doing, it's amazing. You know, we've joined a national conference that we just, you know, getting best practices from all across the US, Hawaii, every place, and it's just, it's just been a real pleasure. It's a lot of fun to just kind of be part of something that's growing and serving the community. So I've enjoyed myself. So I'm going up for another four years.
All right, thank you, and may God bless you. Mr. Kinga, do you have something to say? Because her number of years on Guam is almost, I guess, older than you, but that's okay. I'm not going to bring up your age, but we're okay. Go ahead, Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, she's been on Guam longer than I have been on Guam myself. But I did submit written testimony, if I could surmise succinctly, but as a commissioner, I'll say that Commissioner Tequenco played an integral in developing the commission's mission from the ground up. From the beginning, she served dutifully, having attended all the commission meetings, and sought organizational accomplishments in her initial term to include hiring an executive director, increasing ethics training availability government-wide, and initiating the process for receiving complaints of official misconduct. Commissioner Tequenco further supported the formulation of the commission's public policy initiatives, which led to the enactment of three public laws. These include mandating ethics training for all employees of the government of Guam, which is Public Law 3625 authored by Senator Sabina Perez, reaffirming the Guam Ethics Commission as an independent and autonomous agency within the government of Guam, and authorizing the commission to obtain legal services independent of the Office of the Attorney General, which is Public Law 3628 and 3667 respectively, which was authored by Chairman Senator Joe San Augustin. Recently, at the commission's January meeting, Commissioner Tequenco was reelected among her peers to lead the commission as its vice chairwoman. She's committed, passionate, and accomplished, and furthermore, Vice Chairwoman Tequenco has dedicated herself to the service of our community through her work with Junior Achievement of Guam. As past Board of Director, Chairperson, and current Director, Junior Achievement remains a notable nonprofit that consistently engages many youths in entrepreneurship and financial literacy. Her commitment to improving our local community is noteworthy and commendable. And to reiterate what was shared with Commissioner Leon Guero, Commissioner Tequenco has brought tremendous value to the commission and is essential to being a part of its future. Her background and voice will continue to support a balanced and fair deliberation of all complaints heard by the commission. Her experience and commitment to public integrity are the reason why she should continue her service on the commission, and I have no doubt that Margaret Tequenco will continue to serve with great distinction as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission. Therefore, I respectfully ask the legislature's confirmation of her reappointment.
Thank you, Jess. Senator Tadegui, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Margaret, and of course, to the director. Thank you so much for doing a good job where you're at. You know, I, Margaret talked highly about you and what you're capable of doing, and I have no doubt that you definitely can run this agency. I'll try my best to, I'll look at the budget, okay? But like our good chairman said, you know, show us your results. You know, we give you the money, show us the results. That's, Mr. Chair, I think that's what we're going to tell every single person coming in front of us, you know, moving forward.
As you should.
Yeah.
Private sector does it all the time.
You know, I was going to say that, Margaret, I've known you, I've seen you around, you know, we're about the same age, you know, going around, and then I came from the private sector, you know, I've been longer in the private sector than I have in the government. And yes, truly, it is an eye-opener, isn't it?
Correct.
You know, and there's so many obstacles that you think, are they really helping the people of Guam, or is it really hindering the ability to really provide justice to those who rightfully so, you know, deserve it? Or those who really need to be let out of the government? Because a lot of this stuff wouldn't be tolerated in the private sector.
Absolutely.
A lot of it. You know, so I'm glad you bring that fresh perspective as far as like the private sector and never being in government, so you can kind of understand it, and I greatly appreciate, by the way, for you helping craft the legislation for a couple of these bills. I appreciate that. I'm sure you had help with the other board members too as well.
Oh, yeah.
And most especially, thank you for sacrificing your time. I know that we can be retired at this point, but sacrificing your time to, for the community of Guam and trying to make it a better place for all of us to live, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So good luck to you, and my door again is always open if there's anything I can do to assist her.
Okay.
And last question would be, what part of the Guam Ethics Committee that you, if you could change to make it a better place for those who utilize the facility or those who work in the facility of the Guam Ethics Committee, other than the budget?
No, I think, I think we're set well at this point with our offices, if that's what you're kind of talking about, with our, the tools that are available to us. I think one of the things that's kind of going to say what Daphne said was, is really about getting the voice being heard, getting people to not be afraid to come to us. And again, I'm not politically correct, so I'm just going to say it, you know, but we do get nuisance cases, nuisance cases from some people, and one individual over and over again, but other than that, cases have come in. I think one of the things I'd like to be able to do differently is when a case comes in, we don't get, we don't have the jurisdiction over it, and we kind of have to say, go somewhere else. I want to make it easier for people to know then what's their next step. So, and that's what we're trying to figure out to be able to do without, you know, without, within the law, I guess it would be, just because we don't hear everything. So do they go to the commissioners? Do they go to the AG office, do they do whatever? And that's not necessarily published, so it's, it's kind of like saying, okay, you have, you have these six areas that you can go and report issue to, and once they, you know, if I can't help you, we can't answer your question, we can send them somewhere else. And we don't necessarily are able to send them someplace else all the time, because it's not in our jurisdiction, or there's certain reasons why we can't do that. So I just, I would like to be able to help people faster and be able to then get them to the next place, the next step, versus they get it, and we just say, we, you know, we've dismissed the case and we can't handle you any, you know, we don't handle this. Oh, so what do I do? You know, and it's, what can we tell them legally or whatever to move to the next thing? Sorry, Kate. Don't say that.
But who's your attorney right now?
We have two, San Augustine and, I mean, sorry, that's you, McDonald and, yeah, Bredalio.
So you have two attorneys in this office?
Yes.
Yes, Senator, so the role of the attorney is twofold. We have a legal counsel that advises the commission-
Right.
-on the actual letter of the law, but we also have a prosecutorial counsel whose role is centered specifically on reviewing the cases and reaffirming the recommendation to the commission if a violation has occurred, so.
Is that second attorney out of the attorney general's office, or you actually hire them?
We have two separate firms that represent the commission, and part of the reason for the independent counsel-
So they're on contract?
Yes.
So why don't you use the attorney general's office on the prosecutorial side?
We explored this, and we discovered that the attorney general's office is not exempt from also having ethics complaints filed against them. So if in the event we surface a complaint against a particular official in that office, it automatically will exclude them, because there's a conflict of interest. So we're building something that would insulate the commission from having to sit or not be able to act on a particular complaint if a conflict of interest occurs.
Yeah, and I think there might be an opportunity, I think there's certain areas that have that same situation as you, if it is the attorney general's office, but that's very far and few between, but you're keeping on retainer and attorney, it might be an area that you might revisit to, in the event that it is at the attorney general's office for the complaint, that you hire someone outright and then let them go and not have to, you know, keep their salary on key all the time, and, you know, so that's something you might look into, Jesse, okay? For cost. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, sure, go ahead, Margaret, did you, okay.
Okay, for me, thank you for wanting to serve, to continue serving. You know, it's, four years have gone by pretty quick. Yeah, I remembered you when you first came on board, and I'm like, may God bless you. But you know what? You have to deal with Jesse. I used to deal with him on the Board of Education, and I was always like, which one of the twin am I dealing with?
Always.
And they always have fun with me, but that was okay. But being that, you know, I support your nomination for both of you and Daphne, and what we're going to do is we'll package this and get it ready to be submitted to the committee on rules, so we can get it on, hopefully, on the session floor. So we can get you wrapped up, so we can make sure that there's continuity, and you keep going.
Yeah.
Keep doing what you need to do. That's the goal.
Yeah, I think we've come a long way in four years-
Oh, definitely.
-of the organization. Yeah, I think, but I just think there's so much more we can do, and part of it is just being more public of what we can do, what we can handle, how we can help, and then it's up to people coming forward, as it always is.
Well, just remember like what I said for Daphne is that when it comes to the budget, show me what you've done. You get your shot then.
Yeah.
You presented it all, and then Senator Tadegui and I can just sit back and says, they've been working.
Yeah.
We just need to see more, I'm not going to say prosecution, but there need to be more, some things need to happen.
Yeah.
Whatever, there's an ethic violation, be done with it, and move on. So people can move on in their lives. You don't have to be worrying about there's something behind them. No, just get the job done and move on. That being said, I want to thank everyone for, Jesse, for being here, attending this hearing, providing feedback and suggestion. The referral of appointment of Margaret ER Emergency Room, Tequenco, to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission, that's a joke, Margaret, for the term of four years, May 17, 2023 to May 16, 2027. Public hearing is now adjourned. It is now 2:37. Thank you, Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Telo.
And with that, we'll just take a quick two, three minute, not for you, recess before we're going to go into the next bill. Okay? Thank you all.